Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Clerk Fabella, would you please read the announcements?
Fire evacuation plan. Please note that in the event of an emergency, the fire department has requested that legislators and all others move to the adjacent parking lot in order not to impede the firefighters in their duties. Cell phones, please silence cell phones for the duration of this special session. Microphones, please be reminded to use your microphones when speaking so that you are recorded for the official record. Roll call. Archer.
Here.
Bartels.
Here.
Collins.
Yes.
Delon.
Here.
Donaldson.
Here.
Eckert.
Here.
Fabiano.
Here.
Gerantin.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Heffner.
Here.
Litz.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Mayo.
Here.
Maloney James.
Here.
Maloney Joseph. Nolan.
Here.
Battey.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Rock.
Here.
Worrup.
Here.
And Walman.
Here.
Twenty-two present and one absent. Tonight, you are considering Resolution 228. Uh, oh, actually, there's nobody signed up for the public comment. There's nobody signed up for the public? Okay, would any- Maybe Jeremy Russell.
Would anyone from the public like to speak? Yes, sir. You'll have up to three minutes, and please keep your eye on the timekeeper. And if you have any written comments you'd like to submit at the end, you may too as well.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Russell, and I've been a longtime observer of local politics. And I am speaking tonight as a registered Democrat and anti-corruption advocate. Corruption has a legal definition and a colloquial definition, and I will get back to that later. First, I come from a family of soldiers that have fought in wars for this country for seven consecutive generations. Very first of my name in these United States was captured and forced by the French recruiting agents in Ger- in Germany to fight their war against the British. He escaped their subjugation and joined the British ranks and fought alongside the British. Eventually, after the war, he settled in West Camp and began raising a family. Years later, he witnessed the British using the same force in the name of their king against the weaker classes. His loyalty, being to principle and not party, to what is right, he left his five children and fought the people he had once fought alongside. He joined George Washington in the Battle of Brooklyn and Battle of Long Island in the Revolutionary War. His children fought in the World War of 1812. Their children fought in the Civil War. One became a U.S. Congressman. His son became a U.S. Congressman. My ancestors have dutifully served this country with only the expectation that the ideals and principles that were promised to them would be upheld. My grandfather fought in the Korean War. My father enlisted and fought in the Vietnam War. My brother fought in the Iraq War. Regardless of the merits of these wars, they believed their country was right and they fought for it. They did the hard work. They sacrificed. I have not fought in a war, but I feel compelled to join my family and fight a war against greed and corruption in this country if it stands any chance of surviving. I am not being hyperbolic. It has to start somewhere. Electing Adele Ryder as Controller or Comptroller defies the principles for which I believe this country to have been formed. When Donald Trump appoints Elaine Chao as Secretary of Transport, Andrew Wheeler and Scott Pruitt as heads of the EPA to dismantle the EPA, or Steven Mnuchin from Goldman Sachs as Secretary of Treasury, we easily identify this as a clear conflict of interest. This is not what the people ask for. It is what the Koch brothers asked for. This is systemic corruption. Even the appearance of corruption, these appointments should never have been made. And the only interpretation that people like me can make is that our elected officials do not care about anything more than themselves. And what we do, if we have a healthy media ecology, is find out that these appointments are always made to enrich, subvert, hide, or destroy anything getting in the way of them making money and keeping things the same. In my eyes, a vote for Adele Ryder is no different. It's a vote for corruption, and those that place that same vote are equally corrupt. The Chair has stated publicly in a Ways and Means Committee meeting in November 2018 that she has heard the conversations within the legislature and within the executive branch-
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
It was three minutes, Dave? If you can give you- you can give your written comments? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public? Anyone else in the public? Okay. We'll now move on to the resolution. Resolution 228, appointing individual to fill a vacancy in the position of- I'm sorry, uh, Legislature Donaldson.
No, I was just-
Oh. Appointing individual to fill a vacancy in the position of the Comptroller of Ulster County. Legislature Donaldson.
Um, I'm gonna sit, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's okay with me.
My handicap here. Um, I want to offer an amendment. Reeve Cannon, the CPA, um, a professor of auditing, accounting, and strategy at the School of Business, um, at the SUNY New Poles, um, as, um, from the TBA. Set it to be announced. His name added as, uh, that's my amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment? Legislature Archer. On the amendment-
Um, yeah, well, I also want to continue talking on the amendment.
Okay.
We want to take a look at this, uh, Reeve is the Director of Business Institute, um, at SUNY. Um, he holds a Sam Wilton Free Enterprise Fellowship, and actually, uh, he is certified in, uh, financial forensics from three different organizations, all, um, national. Um, he has also a Certified Valuation Analyst, and, uh, he's been designated as a Master Analyst of Financial Forensics. Uh, he also actually received a Dr. Manuel Saps Outstanding CPA and Education Award, which is the highest honor given an educator by the New York State Society of CPAs. Um, he teaches both Bachelor and MBA level auditing, um, and there are various other business courses. He actually has assembled think tanks for companies throughout the country. Um, he is the, um, as the Director of the Business Institute, he administers and delivers consulting services to small and medium-sized companies, including training programs, marketing research, operation management, organizational development, organizational behavior, and web-based services consulting. He was actually a budget consultant for our county last year through the Gerald Benjamin Center at SUNY New Poles. Um, he has been published several times, both in family, he's been actually published in other than, uh, even other than just CPA oriented items. He is the Director-at-Large of the New York State CPAs Organization of the Mid-Utzen Chapter. He is the Director-at-Large. There is an opportunity here that I cannot even express what we have, the opportunity that we have in this person. And I'll let, I'll allow someone else to speak because I spoke long enough, but I think somebody else can speak on this.
Legislature Archer?
As far as credentials, I, you know, Legislature Donaldson just gave us a bit of his resume. This is a very impressive individual, um, who has an academic as well as a business experience, um, starting off his career as an auditor for Ernst &amp; Young. So, he's had practical application as well as academic, and to be able to bring somebody like that, this is an opportunity that we, that don't come, that doesn't come our way in, in very often. His expertise, his credentials, um, he can lead this department in a very different way than we have seen in the past. We have never had somebody with those credentials with a CPA leading the department, and I think that does bring a different level of expertise to the staff and to the audit function. And I think it's a real opportunity to build, um, some really strong leadership, even in a very short period of time. Um, he can help prepare the department for a new comptroller. Uh, he can help assess, uh, current audit processes and practices. He can, um, look at and the way in which they evaluate risk management. This is someone who is extremely knowledgeable, um, and, and able to help us shore up the way in which our audit function has, is working and where it could work better on behalf of this county and the taxpayers. And I think this is also someone that, if we were to go out and hire a consultant, um, we would pay more than a half a year's salary with what he would bring to the table. And I think that's something we should think about in preparation for a new comptroller we know coming in, in January, and having this department ready to support that individual. So, I think we are foolish. He has taken, he is willing to take a leave from his current responsibilities and devote his time to give back to the county something we don't have today. And I think we should think long and hard and very serious about the level of expertise we would get from someone like this, even for a half a year. Thank you.
Legislature Gerantin.
Thank you. Uh, I think no one's questioning the qualifications of Reeve. Uh, he's very well qualified. I worked through him through the budget process, but I'd like to place, uh, make an amendment to the amendment of Adele Ryder, uh, for, uh, temporary or acting comptroller to the end of the year.
That's out of, I mean, an amendment to the amendment? I think that we have to, we have to vote on this amendment first.
Point of order, Mayor Chair. Uh, Roberts rules allows for-
No, it's the law for me, too.
Roberts rules allows for an amendment to an amendment. Uh, so, where our rules are silent, Roberts rules takes over, and I believe it is in order.
I, I don't believe it's in order because I believe it's, I believe an amendment to an amendment is totally changing this amendment. We would need to rule on this amendment first.
Through the, uh, through the Chair to Legislative Council. Uh, yeah, I, I believe, you know, Minority Council's willing to weigh in, but we can go to Legislative Council first if you'd like.
I'm sorry.
Also, a point of order, uh, by Legislature Donaldson speaking, I called for the vote in a long roll.
And that takes precedence. Okay, the question's been called for a long roll. On the amendment to change, to, to be determined to Reeve Cannon, Archer. Bartels. Yes. Collins. Delon. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Donaldson.
I find, uh-
Can you give Dave a microphone, please?
You know, I've been here for, like, Rich had been here a pretty long time. Rich is out last week for two more years. And I rarely, if ever, can I stand and make a vote where I am 100% sure, without any doubt, nothing in the back of my brain doubting it. Because no matter what it is, as most of you know, in the back of your head, you say to yourself, "Oh, well, maybe, you know, there's a little something." This is probably one of the only times where I am so certain that the alternative for this Reeve is such a wrong choice for us in so many ways. And not only that, but we take a look, let's take a look at the resume and what we're going to get, like Legislature Archer pointed out. What are we going to get here? We are going to get something that is, it's so rare of an opportunity to get something like, somebody like this to come in. Such a rare opportunity at such a minimal cost. And you're gonna throw it away, but you're gonna throw it away for conflicts of interest. Repeated conflicts of interest is what you're throwing it away for. You saw those, two different, uh, letters from people. The one was the, um, the Association of Local Government Auditors, and of course, the comptroller is a, no, that's the chief auditor. The other one came from a renowned expert, a national expert, who's done 12 under seminars dealing with this very issue of independence in auditing. And you know, and instead of doing the right thing, some people are making it personal. They're making it personal. They happen to like one person, they said, "Oh, she's nice, so let's, you know, make her the comptroller. Make them the comptroller after they carried the job out of governing." The audit is supposed to, the comptroller's office is supposed to look back. It's supposed to audit. Audit what has been done. And now you want to put the person in that did the work, or was part of the work, as the person to come in and audit and look. There's a problem there. And if you, though it's, I know, I'll go home and I'll sleep well, because I know I did the right thing, and I'm really, really troubled by this. More than I, I just, I cannot believe, as the Speaker was pointing out, if this was, for instance, it wasn't publicly traded company, and the board of directors attempted to do something for an order like this, the FTC would be down their backs in a heartbeat. Why would they be? Because they figured they're covering something up. They're trying, attempting to cover something up is what they would be doing then. I'm not saying you're attempting to cover anything here, but there's some perception there that it should not be done. And as you know, I am really, I, I am not going to leave it at this, this evening. I will not stop at this. The Volby Papers filed, it is wrong, and you, and you know it's wrong. And that's the problem. You know it's wrong, but you're gonna do it anyway. And that troubles me. It troubles me to no end. There's gotta be some integrity. Keep your integrity intact.
So, yes? Yes?
No. I know I did. I'll pass.
Here. Gerantin. Haynes. Heffner.
Uh, before I cast my vote, I just want to make a few comments. First, I'd like to thank, uh, all three interested parties in this position for accepting an invitation from the Democratic Caucus to go through, uh, what I thought was a very beneficial interview process. I also want to, uh, thank those legislators who continue to participate in the process by participating in the debate and the Laws and Rules Committee, uh, Monday night, for this resolution to move forward as it has. Because of the qualifications that have been laid out of, uh, Mr. Reeve Cannon, um, but also because I truly do believe that it is a simple matter of fact that you cannot deny the issue of conflict in this situation. You know, through research and through information that's been provided to the legislature, uh, more specifically from the Association of Government Auditors. It was brought up at Laws and Rules last night that if you look at the county charter, it defines this position of county comptroller as the county's chief auditor. So, I think it's important that we look at best practices, and I think there's no better example than those that have been laid out by the Association of Government Auditors. And one of the biggest conflicts that they bring about is the issue of self-review. And there's no question that with the other nominee, that we will be facing one of the very conflicts they highlight, in that of self-re, self-review of one's own work. And for that, I have to vote yes for Mr. Reeve.
Litz. Lopez. Mayo. Maloney James. Nolan.
Uh, so, I'm sorry that we have two names being brought forward. Uh, I think that's unfortunate because I don't think these, um, individuals are, are in conflict, um, and I would, um, welcome the contributions of each. The position that we're talking about is not a business position. It's a government position. And the position we're talking about is not a compliance officer. It's not someone doing external audits. The duties of the comptroller as listed in the charter include many, include most that are financial, um, rather than audit in, in character. And when they are audit in character, they're conducted as internal audits with a staff that does that. So, this is, in business, it is not a prohibited situation to have an appointment like this. It's discouraged because there can be situations in which you have true self-review. But in, in this, in this situation, I think the potentials for those kinds of conflict are really minimal, and they're not contemporaneous. The, um, person that I intend to support tonight is vacating a position, and that position is now occupied by someone who she has never worked for. So, um, the, the conflict of interest concerns I think are worth looking at if there is an actual conflict that arises. I expect that any person in that role would, um, step aside from that and provide another way of dealing with it. I do not expect that to happen in the next five months, and I think we have a supremely well-qualified position, uh, person to put in here in, into the comptroller's role. Uh, so, I'll speak to those strengths when I have an opportunity to do that. Um, and I, I do appreciate the, um, the people who came to interview, and I hope that we can make use of the talents of anybody who wants to serve the county, uh, but I'm a, a no on this nomination.
We do have three very dedicated and qualified interested parties for this position. However, there's a, a history with two of them. Um, there's been animosity, um, which has both politically and publicly been in local newspapers. Um, I think that it would behoove us, in the interest of the public, as elected officials, to put someone in this position who is not only very, very qualified, but doesn't have the, the political background, and is going in strictly from an operational viewpoint, who can perhaps give us, um, a, a foundation that will move us ahead in 2020 when the new comptroller is elected. Um, I am a yes on this amendment.
Roberts. Rodriguez.
No.
Rock.
No.
Worrup.
No.
Walman.
No.
And Donaldson.
Point of order, Mayor Chair.
Legislature, Legislature Rock?
Just a point of order, uh, Legislature Donaldson's already spoken to explain his vote. I don't think it's permissible to pass and then explain the vote again.
No, it, it, it's not Legislature Donaldson.
All right, well, I guess, um, Adele did some very good lobbying when she was county executive-
Legislature Donaldson, if you would cast your vote.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And we're talking about the senior-most member of the management team who served in that position two days ago. This situation creates a conflict. It creates a situation of self-review, and that's a threat to the independence of the office. I, again, I want to say this isn't personal. I want to thank all the members who came to be interviewed. And I'm grateful for each of their willingness to serve, but I cannot support this amendment. Collins.
I stand to explain my vote. I will be a yes on this amendment. And I believe that the time for us to look at what we have had, we look at the loyalty that we have, has been displayed. I believe the ability to do the job has already been displayed. I believe the loyalty that says I belong to the county and I'll do what the county needs to be done has already been demonstrated. And I have no problem believing that whatever we need to happen will happen. And saying that, I'm just a yes. I think it's time for us to look past all the rocks and all the junk that's been thrown and look at the fact that this lady has done her job to the top ever since started. Look right now and know that what we expect, I believe, can only be amplified. Thank you.
Delon.
Yes.
Donaldson.
I guess we will ignore the Association of Local Government Auditors, which sent a letter unsolicited telling us not to do this. Lita Arfanta, who is a leading lecturer throughout the country, said the same thing. That one, I emailed her when I got a list. I looked at the list of these types of people that do that, and I just took a chance. She was one of the top people on the list. And somehow she emailed me back within 30 minutes. I was, I was like, wow. But she was very passionate. There was a call named to her, and she was very passionate about this, how wrong it was. The government auditing standards that are part of the comptroller general of the United States, it lists these conflicts that Adele Rider has. We talked about publicly trading companies and what would happen if they attempted to do these things. And common sense, just plain old common sense. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that you don't have someone auditing the work that they did. It's just plain old common sense. And there's zero way of anybody in this room that can turn around and say that they don't see any possible conflicts of interest or any significant conflicts of interest, because you do have to say that. And what I would like you to do, the rest of you, when you go to vote, just turn around and say, you know, if you vote for Adele Rider and say how wonderful she is, but also say, look, I know these conflicts of interest, but I don't care. And that's what you obviously said, just said, I just don't care. I'm voting because I happen to like her. Now, I had a great deal of respect for Adele Rider. And in fact, when she became the acting comptroller, I mean, acting county executive, my first thing was just let her finish at the end of the year. That's how I, you know, I thought she would do a good job, let her finish it up. But then we look at the charter closer, and we said, no, you really can't do that. You're going to have to have an election. Because having an election, if you're saying the people are going to have a say, you're going to have to give the people a say. That's the way I have to look at it. So, and if anybody doesn't see any conflicts of interest, you have a serious lapse, lapse in, in common sense reasoning. Serious lapse. And until this came up, like I said, I had a great deal of respect for Adele Rider. I think at this point, she lobbied for the position of the comptroller while she was serving as the county executive, which is ethically incorrect. And I will be filing some things on those various charges. I don't care, and I'll, considering whether I do file the 78, the Article 78 or not, depends on if I want to spend money, think about it. But I'm really, really bothered by this. And even the idea that minority leader didn't even bother to interview people or have these quorumists interview the people, and instead, they just blindly follow. Well, I'll be a no.
Eckert.
Yes.
Fabiano.
Yes.
Girante.
Dave, you and I have served, as you said earlier, for many years. I think you're, you were missing.
For the chair.
For the chair. That you're totally incorrect about the minority leader directing us or telling us various things. I think everybody inside the aisle made up their own minds who they wanted to vote for. And let's, let's put that, that right there. Secondly.
Let's send Donaldson.
Okay. Yeah. Everybody probably knows Adele. Some people know her better than other people. In all my time, Ben, I've been here, she's served the residents of Ulster County in a very meaningful way. She was a deputy executive director under Mike Hines. She, in my opinion, very thoughtful. She is very fair. She's very well-respected. And saying all that, I think she's very qualified to do this position. There again, you keep saying that there could be conflicts. I mean, let's, let's be real with the comptroller's office actually do, does. They actually, many times, hire auditors come in to audit different areas of the county government. That's not saying they're going to look at the county jex office in any way. They could. But I think they already probably have plans for this year or halfway through the year. I'm sure they're not going to change their total plans at this point. If they are, they didn't work too organized going forward. So in saying that, I am a yes for Adele Rider.
Green. No. Haynes.
Yes.
Heppner.
No.
Litz.
Yes.
Lopez.
No.
Mayo.
Yes.
Maloney-James.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes, I would just like to say that I think that a large part of the difference in perspective here has to do with how we envision the role of the comptroller and indeed, how we envision roles. I think there are abstract organizational charts in which you look at things and you can see lines of conflict. But if you look at practical reality over the next five months, I think a lot of those lines just fade from view. And what we're really talking here about is practical roles. I do not see the comptroller, and I especially don't see Adele Rider as comptroller coming in and reviewing the executive offices in a direct way. I don't view the comptroller primarily as a compliance officer. Adele Rider's background includes being a district attorney in the Bronx for many years. It includes her being a deputy treasurer for the, for Ulster County for five years. It includes her being the acting executive in which I think we all saw an amazing amount of management skills and judgment and discernment in terms of what needs to be done to stabilize Ulster County government during the time of transition and hold a space for a newly-elected person to enter that space. Add that to her lifetime of public service in numerous realms, such that people from my district were calling me to say, yes, please support her because of her, the experiences they had with her and the Girl Scouts and the YMCA. I think what we are doing is appointing somebody who will help bring us together if we will let that happen. So I am an emphatic yes.
Petit.
No.
Roberts.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes.
Rump.
Just rise to explain my vote. I too will be able to go home tonight and put my head on my pillow knowing that I've done the right thing, as has been said by legislator Donaldson in the past. Because sometimes legislators have the ability to have a different idea of what the right thing is. I won't repeat a lot of the things that legislator Nolan said in her explanation of her vote about why she was supporting Adele for this position. But, you know, she has a broad base of knowledge and experience that I think makes her the most qualified person in Ulster County to take over this position. She has experience in finance, as has been mentioned. She has experience in law, which has been mentioned. She has experience in administration, which has been mentioned. And I think most importantly, she has a unique experience that I don't think any other candidate brings to the table, which is she has served in an interim capacity. She knows what it's like to have to ask over and over again. I, I've heard her ask this at least four times in the last, in the last four months that she served as, as acting county executive in my presence. So how many times, you know, I was maybe in her presence for less than 1% of the time that she spent as acting county executive. And she always said, every decision that she made, how will this division, how will, how will this decision affect the next county executive? Because I don't want to do anything that's going to negatively affect the next elected person to hold this position. And I think that that's a very unique set of skills. That's a very unique thing to be able to ask that question over and over and over again. And to not, and to not get down into the weeds on what you think is the best thing necessarily, but what's the best thing for the county and what's the best thing for the next, next office holder? And I, I don't want to harp on this because I don't think that there's this massive conflict of interest that I'm hearing from other legislators. But I do want to say that there's conflicts of interest in, in everyday life for everybody. So to say that there are no, no potential conflicts of interest, I think, is disingenuous. But what I do think is, as a lawyer, she knows that lawyers routinely, routinely run into conflicts of interest. And there's always the option of recusation. And Adele Rider is somebody who I know to be somebody who can take an independent look and outside of what she believes, look at conflicts of interest that may arise and say, you know, this is one thing I'm going to have to step away on. And you know what's great? She's got a deputy comptroller who's in the office who can handle the administration of anything where she actually sees a conflict of interest. And I think that that's where part of her expertise as a lawyer actually helps in that regard. Because lawyers routinely have to, we actually have a whole conflict defenders office that we do with Duchess County because conflicts of interest happen so often. Conflicts happen so often in the legal profession that to save money, to save, you know, ATB assigned counsel funds from the county, we actually employ a couple of Duchess County ADAs in our office and a couple of Ulster County ADAs in Duchess County's office to handle conflicts. So to say that there is no conflict, I don't think anybody in this body can say that there's absolutely no chance of a conflict of interest. But what I do think is that Adele is the, is the kind of person who can both identify and step back. And again, because of all the things that have been said and more, I, I just, I really believe that this is the right thing to do. This is not, as has been said, because of any lobbying or any outside forces or any internal forces. This is because Adele Rider is the, is the ideal person to be the acting county executive. Thank you, legislator. I vote yes.
Warro.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
The motion is adopted 16 to 6. On the resolution as amended. Archer.
No.
Bartels.
No.
Collins.
Yes.
Delon.
Yes.
Donaldson.
No.
Eckert.
Yes.
Fabiano.
Yes.
Girante. Green.
No.
Haynes.
Yes.
Heppner.
No.
Litz.
Yes.
Lopez. Mayo.
Yes.
Maloney-James.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Petit.
No.
Roberts.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rump.
Yes.
Warro.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted as amended 16 to 6. The next regular meeting of the Ulster County Legislature will be held on June 18th at 7:10 PM or immediately following the two public hearings in the legislative chambers. Legislator Litz, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.